We'll call the planning board meeting of August 11th to order. First item on the agenda is minutes from August 4th.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the minutes of August 4th.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you. Brian, I don't see any A and Rs on the table. The next item is a request for release a bond on Gerloff Road. Brian, you want to explain this to the board?
We have an engineer's report saying that all the work has been completed except they can't locate certain road bounds. And they recommend releasing 14,000 of the $16,000 until it takes time to place the bounds in. But I would just simply recommend that the board release the bond in its entirety, $16,253, subject to the installation of the missing road bounds, seven road bounds. That way, we're not releasing $14,000 this week from Zach and blah, blah, blah. But a town treasurer with greatly appreciation. I'm releasing full, subject to the installation of the bounds.
Anybody have any comments?
Where is Gerloff Road again? I don't recall that.
Delvedear Plains. It's near, it's King Street back in there. Gerloff, it's Lowry.
It's an older subdivision that the planning board first approved in 1989. It was the first subdivision plan I signed on your behalf instantly litigued.
Oh, yeah. It was going to be 20 condominiums or 21 condominiums. It's a David Wall development.
So none of us were on the board when that was approved.
They came back and modified it recently to, I think it was a two or three lot subdivision had a small cul-de-sac. I forget exactly when that was. I think that was maybe, well, they inspected it back in 2011 when you released the covenant. I think it was like around 2009 or 2008, they came back and re-subdivided it to a very small subdivision.
So the bond was for what? Road improvements?
The bond was for the release of the covenant. It covered the wear course of pavement, vinyl courses pavement, the Cape Cod berms and the bounds that marked the points of curvature on the road. They've done all the work, except the town engineers can't find the road bounds. So they would hold back $2,100 and release the $14,000 as their recommendation. But my recommendation is simply to release the entire amount. I will hold it. The town treasurer will hold it. We can re-inspect the road bounds and then release it much sooner, is my recommendation.
As for administrative needs.
Do you want to motion?
Yes, I'm looking for a motion.
Okay. I move that the planning board release the Gerloff Road bond in the amount of $16,253, subject to the placing of the bounds.
I'd second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you. The next is a public meeting. The applicant is FWG LLC for preliminary plan for a proposed planned residential development consisting of 33 units of multifamily housing erected on 125 Falmouth Woods Road. Homes of McGrath, the engineers. And for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Do we have notices? Were there notices sent?
No advertisement was printed in the newspaper, but 34 letters were notified by regular mail.
By regular mail.
My name is Mike McGrath. I'm a registered engineer and professional landscaper. I work for Homes of McGrath. My firm drew the plans. Accompanying me tonight is Bob Armit. Kelly Cardoza from Avalon Consulting and Ron Despain from Trune Golf. And what I've done is I've given you 11 by 17s. The first one is just to show you the relationship of the project. This is Route 151. This is Falmouth Woods Road. That's Route 28. This is a project called Fairway Point. This was the original Ballamie Country Club, now called the Cape Golf. And what we're going to talk about tonight is a preliminary of what's just in the yellow. In general, it's shown what's going on, but we're not looking for any kind of permits on the T end. So what I've done is I have prepared another exhibit. This is the second one you have. And it shows that the open space is 92.06 acres. There's nine lots and there's 33 units. This is a planned residential development under the Falmouth zoning bylaw. That's equivalent of a cluster subdivision. The majority of the site is a golf course. And we have applied for preliminary approval for the residential units plus the approval of the concept of the planned residential development. For the audience, this is sometimes called cluster subdivisions in some communities. What I, the third one you have looks something like this. And then the fourth page looks like this. And this is, what this one shows is on the portion that is more or less within where my fingers are traveling, we show you the golf course holes. And we also show you the wooded areas that are existing or there's been some slight modifications that are proposed. And your zoning bylaw has a provision that basically says one of the goals is to preserve agriculture and/or recreational areas. And one of the problems that we have is to develop the maximum amount of usable units under your zoning bylaw. Your bylaw requires that there be open space and that one-third of the open space can be used for agricultural or recreational purposes. So what I've done is I've gone out and we've actually staked the edges of the wooded areas. And we have a total of 24.8 acres of actual wooded areas. There's additional 2.1 acres of wooded areas that are going to be, I guess, they're going to be remediated or restored. Sometimes there's trees, but no, under brush and other places there are scattered trees. All of these areas are a minimum of 50 foot wide. And so we have a total of total wooded open space, including the areas to be restored, of 26.9 acres. And from that, we say that we can have an allowable 13.45 or half of the 26.9. And that comes up with 40.38 acres of open space. So then we divide that so that it gives you the equivalent amount of upland that we can divide. And basically, we come up with 33 units. So what I'm basically trying to tell you is that we're going to have 26.9 acres out of 92.06. I need 26.9 acres, but we're going to be giving a, the entire golf course is going to be subject to a special permit. And the way that I think you should look at it is that the other land that's used for golf course is basically a bonus. This is going to preserve the golf course. And obviously, it's going to help preserve the golf course to have these units. Now, on this sheet, what I did was this is a blow-up of this area here that's outlined in blue, and I outlined this in blue too. And there's two roads, Road A and Road B. And there are nine lots shown on the plan. There are multifamily units here. The lots one, two have three units. Lot three has a four-unit building. Lot four has a three-unit building. Nine has a four-unit building. And these are four-unit buildings. That's a total of 33 units. They are actually proposed to be clustered in a tight corner of the project. I learned years ago from the Cape Cod Commission, that's the preferred way that they look at cluster subdivisions. So what I've shown here is, this is slightly different from what's on the black and white plans in that I've adjusted this to meet the fire department. The fire department wants the outside curve on a cul-de-sac to be 52 feet. Your standard cul-de-sac, that's the radius. Your standard is 48 feet. So we've had to widen the cul-de-sacs here. I simplified the driveways. I had more driveways coming out on Lot B than what was shown on the original plan. And that's because the town engineer made a comment that it was going to be hard to plow the road. The, this is a preliminary layout. We've been talking about adjusting these slightly. Right now, they're looking in this direction. We're probably going to turn them so they look more towards the golf course. So in any case, this is a preliminary plan. Attorney Bob Armit is here. And perhaps Bob would like to say a few words.
Thank you for your record. I am Bob Armit and attorney for the applicant. A couple of things to add. First, given the size of the parcel that's being divided, this project does need to be reviewed and approved by the Cape Cod Commission pursuant to development of regional impact application. And one of the things that the Cape Cod Commission will be interested in, of course, is whether the proposed project is consistent with the local zoning bylaw. So your preliminary plan decision, though it is always preliminary and eventually a definitive plan, application needs to be filed and brought before you and heard by this board. And that would happen after the Cape Cod Commission's review. But your preliminary plan decision will be helpful to the Cape Cod Commission as well as the town planners' advice to the Cape Cod Commission that we do have a project that's consistent with local zoning. And of course, we want to be sure that what we propose is consistent with local zoning and that it wins your approval. Now, it's no secret that Ballamie Golf Club has had financial difficulties in recent years. And the property was purchased this year by the present owner with the goal of greatly improving the golf course, making it a public facility, of course, open to the public, not a private course, rehabilitating the existing clubhouse, and getting the property once again to be a, something that's a real credit to the community and attractive as a destination, tourist facility. And among the reasons why planned residential developments are allowed in the zoning bylaw and listed as the purpose of planned residential development in the zoning bylaw is that existing recreational facilities, like this golf course, which are integral with regional and local tourist and recreational economy, cannot otherwise be self-supporting, will be preserved and protected from development. So the main purpose of this plan is something that the community, particularly the Ballamie neighborhood, seems to support, is the retention of the golf course and not the development of the golf course for other purposes, including losing it to residential property. So the goal is to preserve the 18-hole golf course. And one way to do that is with this cluster development, to take development potential of the golf course. And I believe that one of the plans that Mike McGrath has submitted shows the potential, a division of the property into, I believe it's 41, 80,000 square foot lots. But to take that potential as allowed in your bylaw and preserve the open space, preserve the recreational facility. And we do that by creating this 33 unit multifamily housing at the, on one side of the property. Now, in addition, because I think it's important to say, there's an area that's labeled "commercial area" on the plan. That, of course, is where the clubhouse is. There's also, at least the first hole is primarily on that parcel, if not entirely on that parcel. And there will be a proposal eventually that will have to be part of the Cape Cod Commission review, part of local permitting on that piece for some commercial accommodations. But that's not part of the large parcel that's before you tonight. We meet those purposes. There are, I believe, eight purposes of planned residential development, of cluster development. One is that the integrity of environmentally sensitive or wildlife habitat area will be enhanced, and that's the case here. Scenic vistas will be highlighted and preserved, also the case, I've already mentioned, the preservation of existing recreational activities. The proposed development is consistent with municipal comprehensive plans and objectives, and that it's keeping a very large area of open space that's actually contiguous to other open spaces, including the Moraine Trail along Route 28. You list as one of the criteria in the bylaw, the excellence of overall design and residential amenities. And that the proposed development site plan is designed in its space allocation proportions, orientation, materials, landscaping, and other features to produce a stable and desirable character complementary with the site's natural features. So we think we meet all those. And we think that the requirements for open space are also met. As I mentioned, there are 33 units proposed. 41 to 80,000 square foot lots could have been located on the parcel involved. The open space parcel, including the golf course, is 92 acres. There is very minimal activity proposed in the forested areas that are part of the, this open space and designated on the plan. There are a couple of places where cart paths cross through it, but your bylaw specifically authorizes bike paths and walking paths to go through open space and specifically allows the planning board to approve recreational activity in open space parcels. So we think that that's met. One of the concerns that was raised in the staff report was the proximity of the proposed housing to the first hole. Let me just point out where that is. This is the first hole of the golf course, and it's shown here. And that's, as Mr. McGrath said, subject to some revisions. The plan can take these buildings and turn them a little bit away from looking at, right at the hole, but more down the fairway. With that angle, allows for a better buffer. The golf course hole is also oriented away from the housing. And the golf course designers from Trune Management feel that this design works in that with the installation of substantial trees, as shown on this plan, that the housing is protected and there's an appropriate buffer allowed. So I think I've said enough for now. We have some information. We will submit further information, including the revised plan, to the board in response to concerns that have been raised. And I assume that the preliminary plan review will be continued and give us an opportunity to do that and work with the staff to try to get this plan just right. Thank you.
I have one question. Mike, you said something about restoration of woodlands. I didn't quite follow what you were talking about.
There are some areas on the golf course, again, my name's Ron Despain with Trune Golf. There are some areas on the golf course that over a period of years, the understory has been removed and has been allowed to go to fescue type of grasses. And the intent was to go back into some of those areas and to bring back in the understory. There's a significant amount of area in the future driving range that is, has a lot of material that we can take out and put back into those areas to try and restore those to get back to the look of the original understory with the major, excuse me, with the major tree canopy.
I think it's also worth adding that these areas which are shown as forested, all these areas, the darker green, so they would actually be marked along the fairways. Their boundaries would be marked and staked and designated as areas that are out of play. Ball goes in there.
Lateral hazard.
It's not in play. You don't go and get it. It's, a golfer would refer to that as a lateral hazard. And there will be no management of those areas, other than the creation of them to begin with, if necessary, as Mr., the planes were just describing. So there won't be any cutting, won't be any clearing, very little activity in those areas. And they would all be subject, as the entire 92-acre parcel, it would be subject to a permanent conservation restriction, which we would ask eventually for the town to accept. There was a reference just now to a driving range. And the driving range would be in this area, again, called the "commercial parcel," but it would be in this area. It's not part of the open space parcel.
I have a couple of questions. What is, I understand the whole parcel's 92 acres. What is the acreage of the actual proposed housing? How many acres is those? There's a couple of questions on that.
We have, the total area that's being subdivided is 99.65 acres. And the open space is, I'll have to look. I don't remember.
92. So 99.65 acres is what is actually showed on that plan right there on the easel? I mean, that portion on your easel there?
Yes.
The big one.
If you look at this boundary rate here, that's the 99 point, I think it was 65 acres. Of that, 92.06 is the open space. So the difference of seven acres, I guess, is in this multifamily.
Okay. Next question on that is, are these units for sale units or are they rental units proposed? Condominiums for sale or?
Hi, I'm Kelly Cardoza with Avalon Consulting, and I'm the project manager for the Cape Cod project. They would be primarily sale, although there may be some units that are kept for rental. And those would be the affordable units. We've been talking with the Cape Cod Commission about how best to manage that, and so a final decision hasn't been made.
Okay. And the other question that I wanted to ask is, what is the average size? I understand there's 33 units there. What's the average square footage of each one of the proposed?
About 2,500 square feet.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Ralph, you got anything?
No. Thank you.
I have a question. It appears that the development of the 33 units is the existing driving range, practice range. Is that correct? And you're moving it over to the commercial area? Is that what I understand?
Yes.
Basically, if you're familiar with the property, it sounds like you are, it would be in the area of the present tennis courts.
Okay. The other thing is, the first two drawings you gave us, the golf course, is shown as planned residential development. Are you phasing out the golf course?
No, we're preserving the golf course.
Is that for the golf course area or is that just in general?
This is the entire project, including the commercial. It was submitted for your information only. And your question is that hole 10 and hole 1 are on the commercial accommodation. The future driving range is in here. And you can see the lead of the other 16 holes is shown on the third sheet you have.
A lot of the open space that you're considering appears to be between holes. Is that appropriate to use those narrow strips between holes as open space?
I believe it. I believe it is entirely appropriate. They're significant size, two-point-six acres, four-point-nine acres. Some of them touch the existing open space that was set aside for Fairway Point, the green shaded area. This is eleven-point-three acres. And so the bottom line is, when I look at these areas, and again, they're at least fifty foot wide, I think they are appropriate to be considered as open space.
It's important to just make clear, when you suggest that only the darker green areas which represent wooded areas are the open space, that's not quite right. The entire ninety-two acres of that lot is open space, all subject to a conservation restriction. However, the planned residential development bylaw only allows one-third of the required open space to be included in areas that are being used for a recreational facility. And so the lighter green shown is the playing area of the golf course, which has been laid out by the golf design professionals, Trune Golf. And Mr. DeSpain has been with Trune for twenty-four years. He's a registered land surveyor and registered civil engineer in Arizona. He's been their senior director for golf course design. They've laid this out to be comparable to other facilities that they prepare and are comfortable with the designation of the dark green areas, the forested area, as being out of play. And those areas are, in all cases but one, one is point-seven acres. The others are all more than an acre. Some, as Mr. McGrath just said, as large as eleven acres, those parcels. But the entire area is open space. And in terms of wildlife, going from one area to the other, they'll use the entire area without structures, without, you know, streets and the like. So since we can only count as, towards the required open space, a third of the golf course, much of the golf course, that is, there are ninety-two acres, much of it isn't even counting toward the required open space, but it will all be open space in the sense that's subject to a conservation restriction. I hope that's clear and helpful.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, just one. I'm gathering from this that the whole eighteen-hole golf course will consist of the commercial space and the open space. Is that correct? So holes one and ten are going to be part of the whole eighteen?
Yes. Well, we presently have an eighteen-hole golf course, and although there are substantial improvements being made, and a couple of holes, one and two in particular, have been significantly redesigned, the whole golf course is remaining eighteen holes. And the division of the property into the commercial piece and the open space is really to accommodate the planned residential development on part of the property and to allow, subject to all the permitting that's required, some commercial accommodations as well as the golf club use, which, of course, includes function use and so on, the historical uses of that building.
Thank you. And Mike, I got one question on the development itself in the middle here. I was just wondering why that's drawn as open space? Why you have that little strip? Is that an easement stuff for utilities or?
Excuse me for a minute. You have a minimum requirement of open space being twenty-five foot wide, and I thought that the people should have access to the open space. I also, there is an existing drainage easement, and that's, we're going to, part of our application, we're going to modify that. And so we have actually gone out and tested soils, and it was all underneath a shallow veneer, it was all very good sand. So there's a drainage system here that we're going to reroute, so some of it's going to be drainage easement. This entire site, including all the development here, will be served by one wastewater treatment facility. So these lots don't, under your bylaw, if they have access to a sewer, they can be smaller. So there was a question about two of the lots, but we show that sewer collection system, and we are showing a force main going down, and we have started to permit the wastewater treatment facility by performing some tests witnessed by DP in the next two or three weeks. So that process is starting up. So that's significant in that we have to address, want to go through the commission, the entire nitrogen loading from all of the facilities, no matter if they're on the commercial or on the planned residential.
I was just wondering why you've got two cul-de-sacs and why it just couldn't be one U-shaped road that comes in B and out A, as opposed to having two cul-de-sacs?
I was trying to, I did three or four designs, and I thought this was the best one for I live in a subdivision where there's a through road and there's, people seem to go faster than they should. So I looked at the cul-de-sacs as being a superior way to service dwelling units. So that was a concept that I presented to the owner, and he liked.
Okay. Thank you.
Doug, you had a question?
I just have a question about, I'm surprised that it's allowable to use a grid plan like this on an already developed parcel, and it's new to me, and I wonder if you could explain the logic of that.
The zoning bylaw says you cannot, in order to justify the amount of units that you can get on a planned residential development, you have to file with the planning board a grid subdivision that conforms to zoning and your subdivision regulations.
Right. I understand that.
So I did, I prepared a grid subdivision that's in there. Then you have another provision that says you adjust the units by subtracting the area greater than twenty-five percent, and you subtract the wetlands, and we did that. And the bottom line is that the amount of units that we can get is thirty-three, best in the amount of open space. So now that I mentioned the wetlands, there are five wetlands, four of which are protected. I started working on this project in nineteen-seventy-two. There were no wetlands here before this golf course, but there are four scattered wetlands, and we have orders of condition allowing us to do work. In one case, we have an RDA, request for determination of applicability. So the wetland boundaries have been confirmed by the Conservation Commission, and they are doing some work around.
I appreciate all that information, but my question really is the fact that, when I've looked at these subdivision grid plans before, it's always been on undeveloped property. And then it's, it's open space, of course, because it's not disturbed, but this being already developed, I wonder how that really applies technically.
Well, I think it does. The goal here is to keep it as open space, to keep it undeveloped. The golf courses sometimes are turned into housing developments or other types of development, and the goal here is to avoid that. The property is not limited to its present use, so it, although it has been used as a golf course for thirty-some years, wouldn't necessarily be used for that. And without this supporting development to help maintain the golf course, the risk of that is greater. The fact, as I mentioned when I began speaking earlier, that the development intended to enable the preservation of existing recreational uses is specifically described in the zoning bylaw as a purpose of the planned residential development, and I think that that inclusion in the bylaw, that is very responsive to the issue that you've raised. Purpose here is to keep it, keep the golf course.
I understand the concept of the purpose, but I'm just saying, it seems that it's already developed into a commercial entity, and now we're looking at it as if it were undeveloped to do the grid.
No, we're not, I mean, even if the property were, you can imagine, a commercial use other than a golf course that we use. You can imagine in some communities, there'd be areas which have been used for industrial uses or farming uses, any number of uses. And you could remove the buildings and restore the land and do a cluster subdivision on it. The fact that this has a history, continuing history, of a commercial use, in the same way that agriculture is commercial, golf course is a commercial use, but it's preserving the property, and much of the property is wooded, and that will be specifically restricted. So there is a recreational use, which this is protecting, but the bylaw says, you know, we want to have more than just the golf course area. We want to have, in our open space, areas that are naturally vegetated, with the trees and the understory untouched. So we're providing that, along with a certain percentage of the golf course, which the bylaw has a specific provision that says counts towards the open space. Some of these provisions in the bylaw, which you may have reviewed in preparation for this hearing, or you may want to take another look at, clearly are specifically designed for the use of planned residential development in an instance like this, and even more specifically where there's a golf course. I think that's what the town was thinking about when it crafted the bylaw.
Okay, thanks.
Just one question. Mike, can I give a board that shows the forty-one lot grid subdivision by chance, just for the benefit of the public and the board?
I'm sorry, I didn't bring a board, anyway.
We could put one in.
Can I take one of ours?
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, we've got it for.
We also have, it's more for the audience.
It's for the benefit of the audience. Okay.
According to the bylaw, it should be permanently conveyed to a corporation or trust owned or to be owned by the owners of the lots or the residential units. Who's going to own this golf course, essentially?
There will be a trust that will be in the name of the homeowners as a normal condominium trust.
Short answer is it's going to be part of the condominium.
Okay.
Ralph? Did you say, Mr. McGrath, that the units would be protected from stray golf balls on the first fairway by trees? Or was that Mr. McGrath?
Yes, there are trees placed along the right side of the golf hole, between the golf hole and the residential.
They're not there now.
There are a few trees right now, but we'll be translining trees from the driving range area into this area.
And how tall will those trees be?
They're, the native species that are out there right now, orange pines and deciduous trees, range from twenty to thirty feet tall. We'd be looking at spading trees anywhere from a four to twelve-inch caliper, just to get a wide range of trees to the area.
Okay, thank you. Is there a wildlife corridor on this property, Mr. McGrath?
Traditionally shown in this area has been, there's a faint line that was shown on one of the subdivision plans, and that's wildlife corridor, and I believe that there's a portion of the Moraine Trail runs through that.
Are there any fences or any other, any other structures that would impede the migration of wildlife across this area?
I'm.
On the boundaries of the property?
The reason I'm hesitating is there's, there's no fences on this parcel, but there are fences off the subdivision.
In the wildlife corridor?
Oh, well, I haven't been up there in a long time, so I don't believe there's any based on the aerial photographs, but if you need to know that answer, I'll walk it.
I would think that the town.
There are no fences at this time.
No.
And there are none proposed for the future.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Jim, for now.
Is there any questions from the public? Keep in mind, we want you to know we're looking at a preliminary plan here, okay? So let's talk about that, all right? Nancy? Hayward, please.
You specifically and only want comments about the housing on this plant? Or can I make comments such as, I find it offensive to call it open space where you have to add together and pull out fifty-foot-wide stretches, add them up, move them around to make your open space? I also have a comment to make in relation, Mr. Chairman, and I don't have the name of the person who spoke and talked about this being a condominium development, and my comment was, I heard that there will be affordable units in this. Now, most, and my comment on that would be, it's my understanding that most condominiums have condominium fees. So we are going to put affordable housing units into a development where the owners and someone is going to pay the condominium fee for the unit, if it's an affordable unit, at this moment. Thank you very much for letting me make my comments. Thank you very much for letting me make my comments.
Yes?
My name is Timothy Riddon. I live at 382 Cameron Ridge Road. And I am president of the Ballymead Property Owners Association. I'd like to offer a couple of comments on the renovation of the former Ballymead Country Club and what has been presented tonight, which we would call Phase Two and future commercial development. From the inception of the project, the Cape Club, Mr. Mantassia, has actively engaged our association in the process. We have worked in unison, multiple meetings with our board, and two quarterly update meetings with the association members. The Cape Cut has complete, the Cape Club has completely restored the clubhouse and is actively working to renovate the golf course. It would appear, when completed, the former Ballymead Country Club will be restored to the premier country club facility it once was. The Cape Club, Mr. Mantassia, has done everything he has told us he was going to do. We look forward to working with the Cape Club on Phase Two of the project, the condos, and future commercial development. As we lend support, we also must identify two issues that cause the association concern. The issues are increased traffic and the reduction of water pressure. A renovated country club with, with a premier golf club, 33 condos, and future commercial development will increase traffic entering and exiting Falmouth Woods Road from Route 151. Exiting onto 151, especially exiting to the west, is not easy and sometimes dangerous. We ask that the planning board require a traffic study to be completed to determine the need for traffic single to be installed due to the increased volume of traffic. Water pressure. A few years ago, Ballymead residents experienced a reduction in water pressure when our water supply was converted from a pump station located on our property to the water tower at Technology Park. Although the town believes the water pressure in our community is adequate, many homeowners have had to install booster pumps to achieve adequate water pressure. We believe the potential for another drop in pressure might occur with increased water usage of 33 condos and future commercial development. Currently, there are 304 homes slash condos in the Ballymead Fairway Point community. Adding 33 condos and future commercial development is a significant increase. We ask the planning board to require the Cape Club and the town DPW to test and analyze the existing pressure and develop a plan to provide water to the Cape Club with no adverse effect on the Ballymead community. The Cape Club is aware of our concerns. The Cape Club is willing to continue to work with our association and the town to resolve any potential, potential issues. We appreciate the Cape Club, Mr. Mantassia, including us in the planning process. We like, we like what he has completed, accomplished so far, and look forward to working on Phase Two.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alan Paretti. I'm the resident of Fairway Point. The condominium is already there. And I'm also the president of the condominium association that's already there in Fairway Point. I just wanted to say, we, we are probably the closest direct abuddies to this project on three of the four sides. And I'm not going to go into everything that Tim just said, but we also were very happy with the progress that's happened so far. You know, for the 15 years that I've lived there, we've heard about, you know, people have floated one project or another over there. And the only thing that's really happened is the property's deteriorated that entire time. This is the first time we've seen somebody put a lot of money up, done a lot to the property, improved the facilities, whether it's the course, whether it's the building. And we too look forward to working with, working with this group in the, in the development of this. All I wanted to say.
Yes?
Austin Heath, Five Paddock Circle. I live in Ballymead. I've been involved in various phases of the water situation since 2001. I had prepared to give to you 100 pages of sheer tedium tonight. But I am meeting, going to be with the developers to go over the concerns. The concerns are one of capacity. This will add to the demand for water between 10 and 20 percent. And the problem is, can the system as it is today actually supply enough water to meet that demand? I'll give them the information I have, and I'm sure that they'll be speaking to you on it. But it is a real concern. It's just sheer quantity that will be available. Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, one more?
Good evening. My name is Ronald Simons, and I live at 19 Saddleback Lane in Ballymead Estates. And I'm just curious about the commercial area. And is that, is the commercial area presently, on the present plan, is that zoned as commercial? Or is this a proposal to zone that as commercial?
The applicant can answer that question.
The area is not zoned business. It is like the rest of the area, I believe, zoned agricultural double A. In that district, by special permit, golf courses and golf course amenities are allowed. So of course, the golf course exists based on a special permit. The only new use besides the housing would be commercial accommodations. Some number of, of units, the thinking now is that they would not be in a big building, but be in small cottages, smallish cottages. And commercial accommodations are allowed in the agriculture or in a residential district in Falmouth by special permit with certain density limitations. The need to reserve, if you will, the commercial parcel as opposed to the planned residential development parcel was so that there would be enough land to be able to accommodate a number of commercial accommodation units so that we're not double counting using area for both purposes. So we've separated the properties out for that reason. I hope that answers the question. So this is, everything that's there is allowed in the zoning district, but a special permit is required and because of the scope of the project, Cape Cut Commission approval.
I have a question on the timing of the Cape Cut Commission. We have some dates on this. How long is that going to take? Like, when do you go, this is a preliminary plan. So you, I think we heard you're going to come back with a definitive plan after you've been to the Cape Cut Commission.
That's right.
Can you talk about that process? How long that's going to take?
Well, I think that the process will take a minimum of several months. You're all familiar with another commercial accommodations project on Main Street in Falmouth, which has been the subject of Cape Cut Commission review, and it's been going on for quite a number of months. But I would hope that, from application to issuance of a development of regional impact decision, allowing the local permitting to proceed might not be more than several months. And that depends, of course, on the issues that are identified and the satisfaction of the Cape Cut Commission staff, who have expertise in water quality and traffic issues. So we hope to have the right answers and satisfy the Cape Cut Commission and then hopefully satisfy the Town of Falmouth Board. So you'll see this project back as, I guess, planned residential development requires your special permit. Commercial accommodations requires the zoning board of appeals special permit. You'll also see it under site plan review. So there's a lot of local permitting to be done. The preliminary plan process is not an approval that allows any project to go forward. It is an opportunity for a developer to get feedback. And that's really what it's about, to, in order to smooth the subsequent permitting process. And so the Cape Cut Commission, in consultation with the town, agreed that our coming before, the planning board for, on preliminary plan did not require referral to the commission. It's an opportunity to introduce the project to the community and then we, with your input, be, really begin permitting process in earnest.
So, so we'll go through this preliminary plan in the next couple of weeks, give you our opinions on it, and you go away, deal with the Cape Cut Commission, and come back again after you're finished with that? Is that basically?
That's right, I hope. And I think, you know, your preliminary plan decision is more than just opinions. It's, we certainly, we want to leave this process, this preliminary process, with, with a pretty good idea that, that we've gotten the input from the planning board, from the planning staff, and made appropriate changes. Our preliminary approval by the planning board is certainly not a binding decision in the, in this, in any sense. But we want to feel that we have a project that, as we enter into a very substantial permitting process, has had your review and that we've received your comments and can take them into account to make any necessary changes.
Okay, anybody else? One more, yes.
Steve Haddad, precinct five. I have no vested interest in this project. I just came to listen. I would hope that the board would enthusiastically support what's before you tonight. It's very rare that 81 or 41 potential house lots on 90 something acres gets turned into 32 on something considerably less than that. So I would hope that you would support that. I'm certain that the developer has taken into account the, the history of the water pressure up there and probably do everything that he can to make sure that he has adequate water pressure for his future plans and for the, although he's not required to take care of the entire neighborhood, but I'm certain that he'll factor that in. In addition, Ballymead is very, very difficult to get in and out of. And whether or not this plan goes forward or not or any other future development, the residents in Ballymead know that the intersection is difficult. Perhaps they should be doing the traffic study and perhaps they should be funding whatever remedial action is needed up there to make that a better situation. But, but I really want to say, this is, this is a great opportunity to, to limit some development and we should all be in support of it. Thank you.
Brian, I have a process question. Are we going to do a site plan review as part of the preliminary plan? That'll be when the special permit comes up. You okay with that? Yes, Bob first, Mr. Ahmed?
A couple of things we'd like to say. First, we think it would be helpful if the planning staff and the planning board visited the site, walked some of the areas to see how we've separated the playing area of the course from the wooded open space. So we invite you to do that if we, if there's a time to make a site visit. We could arrange that up, obviously. I wanted to comment about affordable housing issue. Certainly, the inclusion of affordable housing in condominium developments is not a new thing. There are standards for doing so and requirements to maintain permanent affordability for the affordable units. I think that the inclusion of affordable housing in the housing project is a plus, not in any way a detriment. And indeed, it's a requirement that affordable housing be incorporated in the preferences of the Cape Cut Commission, that it'd actually be with, included in the, in the housing being created. This is, affordable housing is, is not a stigma. It is quality housing for townspeople. And included in this project is, is simply a benefit every way around. I think Kelly Cardoso has a couple of comments about traffic and about water. You know, these issues, of course, I, you know, I would imagine your preliminary plan decision will simply say that they have to be addressed in connection with the definitive plan. You're not going to get into detail on those issues at this time.
With regard to traffic, the, you know, there's no surprise that the Ballymead community is concerned about how to get in and out of Falmouth Woods Road. And we've done traffic counts. We've met with the Cape Cut Commission several times. We have looked at appropriate volumes and distribution. And they are, and we've had discussions with them about the viability of a traffic light here and whether it's warranted. And I think what the proponent has said to the, to the Ballymead community is, if, if a traffic light is warranted, then we will step up and, and take care of that and, and bear the cost of the installation of a signalized intersection. This traffic study hasn't been completed yet, so we don't know whether we're actually going to meet the warrants. The traffic engineer is working on that right now. With regard to water, it has been a difficult situation. And what the proponent has committed to the community is that they won't make it any worse. And, and they'll work together and address the issue. So I know Mr. Heath has, has a number of pounds of paper, I'm told, that he's willing to share with us. And they'll be reviewed and appropriate water testing will be conducted. Pre-construction, post-construction, and modeling will be completed as needed to figure out whether we think that there will be a, a negative impact. So both of those issues have been committed to by the proponent and, and they're fully aware that these are part of the process that they need to go through.
Back again?
I would just like to confirm that statement that we have had with Mr. Mantassia, that we have been actively working on these two issues. He understands our concerns. And we have discussed potential mediation, mitigation and resolution, if anything should happen. So I think that's positive. But I would like you to take into consideration, on July 29th, there was a discussion between the town, CLSV, the owners of 31 acres a little bit west of the entrance of Ballymead property, and the Cape Cut Commission about trying to figure out how to develop that piece of property. As you know, across the street from that piece of property, there's an appeal on a decision that was made by this board on decision that was made by this board on Nathan Ellis Highway LLC on the denial of two parts of the special permit, which means if it was overturned, there's going to be potentially a lot of stuff going on in a tenth of a mile. So as we take into consideration what's going on in Ballymead, and again, we support what's going on, I think we also need to take into consideration the infrastructure challenges that might happen with what might be developed in the thirty-one acres, and if anything negatively happens across the street based upon the special appeal.
Okay, well, we'll open this back up again. A week or two, we're going to bring it back, Brad?
Next week.
Next week. So there won't be, I don't think there'll be any new notices sent. The next time is when the special permit goes out, there'll be a rash of notices sent by registered mail to the butters at that time? Yep, so that'd be a ways, so there won't be any. You have to pay attention to the Cape Cod Commission's notices from here on out to get involved with that. But we'll be meeting on this on this preliminary plan one or two times more in the next couple of weeks, try to get through it. Thank you very much. We'll recess for a minute. Let the room clear. All right, I'll bring the meeting back to order. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is continued discussion regarding building elevations in the FEMA flood hazard zones. And then we'll deal with that first. Bob, do you want to read?
It's proposed.
Is it proposed?
No.
We don't have to. Okay, it doesn't have to be read. Okay, you guys remember the last time everyone on board here? Any have you all had time to read read this?
No, I haven't had a chance to read this.
Or you'd like to take a minute and do it now? Well, Ralph, do you have any concerns about it?
No, I don't have any concerns or suggestions. The when you talk about the flood hazard overlay district, we mentioned this the last time, you put in parentheses FHOD the first time it's mentioned, then then when it's referenced later on, people will know what we're talking about here. So that that should show up in the article under number one in the article, in the line that starts with quote for property located in a flood hazard overlay district, I would put parentheses FHOD there. And then on the title of the article, where it says flood hazard overlay district, I would put FHOD there. I had also mentioned that for the purpose, I wondered whether we could, should be anything in there about minimizing the cost of insurance, and I didn't see it added here, so maybe maybe it's not appropriate.
Right, it's a private matter. The town does it involve itself, so we have a discussion about that.
Okay. And then on on page two, at the bottom, paragraph D, it says it talks about the issuance of a special permit. I think you should indicate at that point who by whom. There's 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 a there's reference to both the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board later in that paragraph, and also the Conservation Commission. But the issuance of a special permit in the paragraph D, I think that should be spelled out as to who would be issuing that special permit.
Isn't the Planning Board the one for when you're altering filling areas, is that a Planning Board issue?
No, there's a section of zoning bylaw that says if the special permit granting authority isn't referenced, it's automatically the Board of Appeals.
Yeah, I know that one.
And again, in the second sentence, it goes, "Before granting the special permit for alteration of landforms, the Board of Appeals shall duly consider or referral from the Planning Board of the Conservation Commission." We see if we can move that around, Ralph, further into the paragraph.
I guess my my point being that anytime you make a statement in there, and then you have to be familiar with or reference a statement somewhere else in the regulations, it's 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 a burden on the person reading the reading the.
In the paragraph on establishment, I see they refer to the panel numbers within the Town of Falmouth. We should double check that. There's about twenty-five or twenty-seven there. If you miss one, you may be in trouble. So once you have a long list like that, it may be appropriate to double check, triple check that.
Agreed, because after we finish our discussion here tonight, I'm going to go out to the Board of Appeals, and the Billings Commissioner, and the Council, and everybody else to check the panels.
Thank you.
Because we had two or three, then we had five or six, now we've got a whole bunch.
If you miss one, you may be in trouble.
No, we will be in trouble.
Well, I have a concern. You folks don't seem to have the same, so maybe it's just me, I'm okay with that, too. This could, in some cases, is going to create a ridge of buildings that are ten feet higher along the shore.
I'm going to suggest that this is not done yet.
Okay, that's what.
Because when you look at the former one that this is going to replace, there are a whole lot of stuff in here that is not in here that probably should be. It has to do with what's going to be allowed and what isn't going to be allowed. And we may, and that's the philosophical discussion, I thought, that we probably should have as to what we want to see. We want to see something, and you probably have noted that Brian did the drawing that we asked for, wherever it is here, in all this information.
There it is.
Yeah, that indicates what we're likely to see. And we haven't really discussed yet whether we want to see something like that, because if we don't want to see this, we're going to have to change the height of building, the restriction on heights of buildings. Otherwise, we can go up almost to fifty feet.
Well, the language here is heading directly for that.
Right. According to the graph, just like going from left to right, this is what we do today. This language will wind up over here to the right. It's going to be base flood elevation plus two feet, that's where you start the bidding and up you go. Do also remember, though, that there are there are some velocity zones that are very high.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet. Very difficult to actually build new construction in there on the conservation grounds. And they're over on the Buzzard Bay side, so what I'm going to do, I'm going to try to get the, didn't have time to get it done, but I'm going to try to also identify the geographic areas.
Five feet.
So you have a good in your mind's eye where in some areas, I think the base flood elevation is, you know, five feet. So I'm going to try and get that done to you through the GPS, but you'll see where these areas are that might have a greater significance.
The quirky thing that I picked up is some places on points of land, like Juniper Point and other points of land, it does also go up eighteen to twenty feet for small little areas.
Right.
And I've seen that VE twenty on the South Shore, too. And for some reason, I don't know how they do it, but they came up with it on a point of land. So that means if you have a house on existing point right now, that thing could be a toller.
Again, and that's a lot of the stuff we took out of the bylaw you see here, covered by law, it's not covered by the Building Code or Conservation Commission. And the residual is what, you know, the Board of Appeals have been looking at, or, again, the building height definition and the flood. I think it's the Board of the Board that have that sort of stuff in this country and come up with some policy, multiple decisions, that's what you're paid to do. In the background, please know that, you know, some of this stuff is going to be dictated no matter what by the building code. So, but have that philosophical discussion, I think it's very important.
Doug? I feel like this is definitely going the wrong way. We don't, I don't believe we want to start measuring the building height from the maximum flood height. Like you said, we can be up close to fifty-five feet. That would be crazy. And I think in these areas where it's already debatable whether it should be developed at all, I don't see why anybody, even if they're at the twenty-foot point, they can certainly make a nice one-floor house with fifteen feet to work with. And if there's some issue where they need a little bit of room, they can come before us for a little relief. Maybe we'll reserve the right to grant relief in particular cases. But I see a lot of one-story houses on on pilings, and that's my opinion.
I'm definitely in agreement. That's why I said I hadn't really gone through this, and I'm not in any way, in form, ready to give, let's start the building height at this level. No, no way.
I didn't hear a lot of talk, and we were moving in that direction, that's why I stirred the pot a little bit here.
I'm totally in agreement with this. And there are other things that, I don't know, Brian, what is currently covered by the the new laws that is not in here.
So Eladio Gore and I went through the existing zoning bylaws together, and took out what is now covered by the Building Code. That doesn't have to reside, or actually shouldn't reside, in the zoning code, because actually the state law says you're not supposed to.
So all those other things that Pat mentioned, those are the Building Codes?
Those are either covered by the Building Code.
Okay.
Most of them, most of them are covered by the Building Code.
These are the ones that are?
And or Conservation Commission. And these, this what's left over, you know, the calculation of where you do the building height, and certain alterations of the landform that don't need a building permit. So if you're going to bring in fill or alter the landform and flood hazard, at least in the Board of Appeals and probably Conservation Commission, that's something like that.
I like that.
Yes.
I tend to get in line with the the left wing of this table here. I can see raising the building height maybe five feet, but I don't feel that we have to allow a two, two-and-a-half story house on top of the the base flood elevation. And it was mentioned last week that this is going to cause some pain, and I started thinking about that. And, you know, I'm three miles inland, sitting seventy-two feet above sea level, and I'm paying triple what I used to pay for homeowners because of these properties. So I've been feeling the pain. And I'm perfectly safe, I've pruned around the house, cut down trees and everything, so nothing lands on it, and yet my insurance rates don't go down. So, you know, if people choose to live in these areas, then that's the price you pay. I don't feel like we should be giving more relief, creating more incentive for people to build in these areas. If anything, it should be, we should be disincentivizing building in these areas.
So are you saying no relief?
I'm saying that a little bit of relief, you know, if, you know, maybe five feet as opposed to thirty-five feet, so a five-foot maximum height. So if your house fits in that, fine, if not, sorry.
So what's the next step, Brian? Does this get redrafted again, back for another discussion, you listen to our comments, and come back again?
We do.
Anybody else want to throw anything in there right now? I will, that's what I heard, what I was hoping was be said. Thank you. Yes, Pat?
Okay, the question I would have, though, is, does that fit in what we have in front of us, the redrafting, to incorporate that? Or do we then have to go into the building height and modify that, too?
Right, what I'll do is I'll go have, I'm going to have to go back into building height definition, the first thing you see here, and modify that so that such that it won't be base flood elevation plus two, probably start your building height calculate, your building height calculation. Remember, the building itself must be elevated. But instead of going from the average grade, you might just say one-half of the base flood elevation.
Why wouldn't you just go from the grade? It's already defined.
Well, you, I just heard you wanted to grant something. It just depends on how much you want to give.
Yes, Ken?
I don't believe we need to give relief across the board. That was the thing I was doing in my head, you know? I mean, if somebody's at a five or eight feet, I don't think they should still be able to get a thirty-five-foot tall house. I think we need to kind of look at that more and say, if it's above this level, there should be some kind of relief, you know what I mean? Because that would give, still give incentive, oh, well, I could still, if it's ten, you could still put a thirty-five-foot house on top of that.
But I think what Brian's saying by, not to give relief across the board, because it won't be needed across the board in all areas, but if there's a mathematical formula for measuring the building height in a fashion that gives five feet relief.
Well, it's giving ten if you go half.
I guess it's just a philosophical question. Remember, you have to be uniform.
Right, right.
I'm not sure we can say, okay, in V zone eighteen, you get plus three feet, and V eight, ten, you get nothing. I think we have to be uniform in the flood hazard overlay district, where we draw that line for each area. I'll check with that. I'm being conservative, the old uniformity thing. If we can have a little discretion, it might be a little cumbersome, I don't know if it will really work on a lot of them, but I guess that's what I need to hear from the board is that you want to have some formula. If I'm here and just leave it the way it is, or is it, do you want to have something? And what might that percentage in your discussion be? Ten, ten, fifty percent of base flood elevation? I mean, there's no right answer here, it's just, you know, it's a discussion I think I need to hear you have. I might come back and say, okay, you start the building height elevation, the building height calculation at base flood elevation minus three, you give an extra three feet. Is that comport with your thinking?
I don't think that, I don't think the way you're wording it is correct, because if we're twenty feet above and you're subtracting three feet, you're adding seventeen.
Right, they wouldn't get the, let's go back to our diagram. I tried to get this on a par point, but. So right now, what we're saying here, the end result of this bylaw is your base flood elevation plus two feet, and then we calculate your building height thirty-five feet. elevation plus two feet, and then we calculate your building height 35 feet. What I'm saying is, I'm going to go back and rewrite the bylaw, then instead of starting at 35 feet here at base flood elevation plus two, I would say, okay, I'm going to start at base flood elevation. That brings you down two feet. Or base flood elevation minus two. So you get to go up, maybe, so 30, you know, elevation 35, you might be at elevation 38. So I'm worrying, I'm worrying how you can, the building will still, the building will still have to be elevated to at least base flood elevation, but you're only going to get so much overtime.
Right, but I just feel like.
To cover some time.
Well, no, it's not. I just think that the result that you're going to get from what you're saying is much bigger than what we're feeling.
Right, mathematically, if it says as a 18, you minus three, that's 15, that could be 50 feet under the current bylaws. That house could still be 50 feet. So that, that doesn't work. That, calculating it that way doesn't work. I understand you're trying to say uniformity, but we can't do it mathematically that way, because if you're at a five, you know, that would be maybe 40. But if somebody's at 10 or 15, if you're given, allowing them still 35 feet, it's going to go way above what I believe we, we think should be allowed. That's.
Okay, I see that, that's a lot of.
Yes, Pat?
I am thinking about the lot coverage bylaw, which we haven't dealt with for when most of these board members were here. It was normally 20%, and it could go up to 25% by special permit. I think we could say in this instance that it, we do not want to see an, an exceedance of 35 feet as it currently stands, but by special permit, we could allow up to whatever it is. We could use that as an example for something that was okay with lot coverage. And that way, we're not going to see something going up to 48 feet, whatever it might turn out to be. So we do have a finite control on the height that we want to see. But an exemption would have to be made by special permit. And I'm thinking in this case, we could look at the surrounding area too and say, no, you're going to tower over every house in the neighborhood, so we're not going to allow that.
But you know, I was giving some thought to how many special permits we do in this town. Everything's special permit. And it seems like we should try to move away from that. Because then we let ourselves in.
Open ourselves in for more litigation.
Right, more litigation, plus more oversight and more management.
And that's why I think we just change the building height to 40 feet.
In these areas?
And the town, you know, even townwide, if you want to do that, or just in these areas.
I don't think we should change it townwide, just, just like that.
I myself would be, I'm open to all the ideas, but I myself like the 40 feet in the flood plain, max, and that's it. Measuring from grade. Not, not for base flood elevation.
Is that?
So if you lose 10 feet because of that, your house is, your house is 30 feet.
So in the flood zone, sorry, is that meaning all the, all the flood zones are in excess of three or five feet? Is that what you're saying?
No, there's many different ones.
They're all different, they're all different.
Is there some?
Some are inches.
Under, or then we don't want to give people 40-foot houses?
Well, I think that's.
We've got to be careful with that.
Well, that, we'd have to do it different for every single property though, because that's the thing, it's a unique setup.
Okay, so.
They have to get an elevation certificate and measure it, every property is unique.
All right, so then I'm going to revert back to Brian's idea with the incorporating the base flood elevation, but not going to be just three feet down from it. Maybe there should be like a 30% calculation or something which keeps it.
Or a negative percentage.
Right.
Instead of a number. So if you're at base flood elevation minus 30%, so if base flood elevation is 15, then you get five foot relief. If it's base flood elevation is 12, then you get not relief.
Maybe that, I don't know how the math would work, but we'd have to figure it out. But the end result, we wouldn't want to see more than 40 feet on the Vineyard Side, and definitely not more than 45 on the Brothers Bay side, because I think there's about a five-foot difference there.
That's pretty close.
I don't know, not sure.
Oh, I'm not done with this one.
That's why you're, right, it's a, it's a, well, at least you've crossed the threshold of, okay, we're going to, it seems as though you've crossed the threshold.
You haven't done anything, she was wanting for it.
But let's, let's.
And it might be that, okay, now you're fine tuning to what it is, where you start the bidding. So let me work on, let me work on, I guess, the definition, something that we're heading. Bylaw looks as though it's in good shape. And let me think about how I might have a formula driven, not special permission driven, but formula-driven of definition. Some sort of formula, calculus. Takes into consideration the various heights in these flood zones, but sets a limit. You don't want, you don't, but the maximum is going to say 40 feet over, and the whatever it is, whatever it is, from grade level. Give them some relief, but set a ceiling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds nice.
On the diagram, if you know.
I like the concept of the special permit without raising it, because there's a lot of surrounding areas that might be affected by somebody going up 35 or even 40 feet. So I like the concept of the special permit, because these properties are pretty unique. And if someone comes in because they have to raise it so high, we may want to consider a maximum height of 40 feet, providing a special permit is granted.
Well, the only thing is about special permit, it opens up, you know, it's a real headache for anyone to go through the process, there's all kinds of qualifications in it.
Headache with the board.
I know, but I think the goal is to have, as in zoning, at least in my opinion, is fewer and fewer special permits, and just try to simplify it.
Yeah.
And just say, you know, I'd rather just say not at all than, than open up a can of worms with a special permit after special permit every time they have to build a house.
And that's something we've discussed in the local comprehensive plan. We're trying to eliminate a lot of the bureaucracy involved in doing things in this town.
Keeps the lawyers and engineers really busy.
And it's also going to be a lot of tough decisions for us.
Right.
This house.
Pitting neighbor against neighbor.
This house is like situated in this way, that house is situated, well, you just did this for that guy, what about me? You know, we're going to have a lot of tough, tough, tough decisions. And ultimately, sooner or later, we're going to do something unfair.
They are.
You can't just have a cookie cutter approach, it has to be based on something.
Let's see what Brian comes up with here.
But if you do something on the percentages, it won't be cookie cutter, with it not to exceed.
There might be a solution there, yeah.
Because right now, anybody can go up to 35 feet. Five feet higher, it's a little shorter than I am. And that's not that much, because when you consider that a number of houses will have cupolas on them, they don't count, all sorts of things like that.
The measurement, so you guys know, it's from the ridge line, okay? If there's widows' walks, air conditioning equipment, chimneys. Other things, that doesn't count, it's the definition is the ridge of the house.
Not the widow's walk.
Not the widow's walk.
Unless it's a substantial structure.
That would be gone anyway.
A lot of money can make them gone.
Okay.
Is that little blotch a school of bluefish going through? It looks like a fish.
I forget where, I guess it's on some theme house up ahead. All right, so I'll try to put together for next week, kind of formula-driven with not to exceed, you know, the GIS map of the, showing elevation.
The next?
Future agenda?
No, well, we got one more. Vote to submit the transportation element for the local comprehensive plan to the town warrant.
Oh, yeah, didn't we already review that?
Yes. We have to take a vote to submit it.
Yeah, we changed it when I wasn't looking.
Yes, we did.
It's a completely different. Vote to approve.
So I move that the planning board votes positively to submit the transportation LCP element to the warrant.
I would second that motion.
Any discussion? We've discussed it before. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, none? Very good. Next item is general correspondence.
I, you received a piece of general correspondence from the Board of Appeals. I had intercepted it because it involves a legitimate situation on Route 151.
Thank you.
Just so you know.
Okay.
It involves what?
It involves an appeal of your decision on Route 151, on the Cabo's property. It's a letter from the Chairman of the Board of Appeals. I have intercepted it. I'll show it to Mr. Duffy, and Mr. Duffy says you can read it. My sense is, well, I might just show it to council first, just, I want to bring that to your attention.
Potentially coercive?
It's just a letter that involves a case that's active, and instantly, instantly
Future agenda items. Yes?
Two, two things, not necessarily agenda item, but, well, yeah, it refers to the local comprehensive plan. Is there a possibility that we could get a copy of all of the elements of the local comprehensive plan that have been approved since we've started our revision of those in some kind of a folder, so that we could each have a hard copy of that? How many elements are remaining to be done?
They are all on the website, they're all bullets on the planning board website.
I know they are, I know they are.
I'm trying to remember how many have been approved by town meeting. I know definitely four have been approved by town meeting. There were a total of 14 to begin with, we've combined some, and.
We'll include that in the report.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, I would appreciate it if I could have a hard copy of those.
They are on the webs.
I know they are on the website, I'm looking for a hard copy.
Got you.
Got it. Thank you. And the other thing is, I would appreciate it if we could have maybe a 10 or 15-minute tutorial from Mr. Duffy about how he represents us at, at these appeals. Because I'm, I'd like to, I'd like to know the difference between whether or not he argues the points that we made, or whether or not he argues that we were arbitrary and capricious.
Actually, I can probably do that.
A whimsical.
I can probably do that for you.
Well, I, I would appreciate it if Mr. Duffy approached us and told us how that's done.
I will, I will pass that one.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on that? Is that something will be done in executive session?
No, if it's, if it's just generally how he approaches an appeal of your decision or any special, any zoning decision, I'll ask him to give us a small tutorial on a trial de novo. Your decision has no evidentiary weight. The court reviews it de novo, and then we have to, you know, essentially, the court becomes the special permit creating authority, and says, oh gee whiz, go back, remant it back, you exceeded your authority, or whatever it may be. I'm sure, you know, it might be a good thing to do, let me see if I can put it together, and bring in a, the zoning board too, because they obviously would have an interest in how these things work. Okay.
And I'd take it one step further, I think it would be nice, since we are, since we are the defendants in these appeals, that we would be notified when town council was going before the judge, so that we could actually sit there and listen to the deliberations that are, that go on. I would like to have at least the opportunity to do that. I'm not saying I would every time, but I, after 12 years on the planning board, and I've been sued, I don't know, four, five or six times, I never attended one, and I, and, yes, the town council is representing me, but I would like to listen to what actually transpires, or at least have the opportunity to do that.
Okay, that's no problem, I find out the trial date for certain appeals that are coming up, I'll let the board know.
Thank you.
Good idea.
It's really not that exciting.
I'd like to see how he argues against the whimsical nature of this board.
Well, sometimes, sometimes we have to say, I think it's a remand is a good idea, Your Honor, and we'll go back to that whimsical board and straighten them out. That's no problem, we can get trial dates for you, and the United States wants to attend. And I'll see if we can put some sort of tutorial of how the process of an appeal.
Any other future agenda items?
Is it time for a review of the zoning book being rewritten? Is there any input required for that?
We're going to really try to get that out in September, the RFP. It's just that so much is going on with the council's office at this point in time, it is called when we issue the RFP.
See that, we're bogged down with special permit issues.
Yeah.
We don't need any more special permits.
So we're trying to get that out in September, if the Board of Appeals asks the same.
And? Is there some more information about the coastal resiliency that we should be reviewing? We're just kind of studying on our own right now, should we have another discussion about guidance towards?
Let me check in with Marley, because she's a source project. I know she's working on some stuff, I know we're talking to Webner again, too. So let me check in on resilience and.
Are you thinking like updates of things that they've done in other areas, or?
Just any information available that we can be working on, so we keep the ball moving, so we don't just forget about it.
Because we've passed our coastal resiliency goals.
Yeah, the goals, but.
Where we're at, where we're at in these actions, I know.
Oh, action items, we could add, okay, I got you, yep.
I know we're having some active conversations with Webner, and I know we're having some active conversations, we just had them today with the extension service, KICOD extension service with regards to community rating system, and what towns do, you know, to get those points and actually implement, you know, some resiliency issues. So I know those discussions are ongoing, so I can maybe have a review, get it on the agenda, future agenda, not next week, but probably right in September.
Okay.
Okay, the next meeting is on the schedule for Tuesday, August 18th, and we have one following week after that too, right?
And right now, we're looking at September 22nd for the joint meeting with the Board of Superior.
And how about an agenda for that?
Doug will be in touch.
Okay.
Right now, we're looking for sure Paul McMahon Associates will be there to give both boards the overview of the corridor study. We're actually meeting with them this week, they're going to show us the PowerPoint presentation and hold that here. So they'll be, they'll be briefing both boards on the entire corridor study that they've been working on for the last few months. That for sure will be on the agenda. Your transportation, the transportation element that you just voted for the warrant will be on the agenda, if everyone will, we like to focus for sure on transportation.
Well, that was the end of everything we had on the agenda.
Okay, move adjournments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Very good.